All right, let's begin the City of Newport Beach Planning Commission for Thursday, July 22, 2021. And Mark, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to roll call.
All commissioners present, with the exception of Vice Chair Kleiman and Commissioner Klosterbauer, who are excused this evening, and Commissioner Kettin, who will arrive around 7:00 PM.
All right, thank you. All right, now's the time we'll take public comments on any items that are not currently on the agenda. If anyone from the public has any comments on non-agenda items, now's your time. Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, requests for continuances. Are there any requests for contingencies?
Chair Lowry, there is no request for continuance tonight.
Right, great. We'll move on to number six, which is our consent items. And we just will start with item number one, for the minutes of July 8, 2021. See if one there A, if there's any public comments on that item for those minutes.
I'll make a motion on that, and Mr. Mosher submitted some edits that I'd like to add to the motion.
Okay, we have a maker of the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Okay, we'll move on to item number two on consent items, and we will start off with any public comments on item number two, which is 3309 Ocean LLC Encroachment, PA 2021-091.
Thank you very much. My name is Ron Yo, 604 Iris, Cronodamar. I'm here on behalf of the Cronodamar Residents Association regarding this particular request for the right-of-way use and its relationship to one of Newport's best scenic ocean-view corridor that we have, I think. And it's a corridor that's heavily used from sunrise to sunset by our residents and our visitors. And as beautiful as it is, and as well-maintained as it is, it's getting a little old and tired. And so the association feels that it's time to come up with some refurbishment, but it needs a direction of how to go instead of just doing it piecemeal. So we're putting together a citizen-run master plan for improvement. And in relationship to that and this project, we feel that the existing landscape does not fit into the L6 policy of the city council. And that regards when you approve the, if you do, if you go according to the staff report and approve the Hardscape, we would request that you require as a condition that new landscape plans be submitted and reviewed in compliance with what should be occurring there in terms of visual open space and that while still protecting their privacy and security. But I think that can be accomplished. It's pretty easy to do. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. If you could, forgot to say to state your name and ask you.
Good evening, Chairman Lowry and members of the commission. So my name is Scott Laidlaw, and I'm the project architect for the David and Mary Ellen Wright. And I think, I mean, you have, you have Public Works' staff report. But really, all we're doing here is just documenting existing conditions. The existing conditions extend back to 1957. You can find them in the original drawings for the house. You know, we're adding 4% to this house. We've treated it as a less than 50% remodel, one of the very few projects along the bluff top that, you know, has tried to stay small. And, and so I think that the main thing, and I've met with Ron, and I, and I like the direction they're going with the plan, and I've discussed the plan with the Wrights. And they're also supportive of the idea of enhancing the experience along Ocean Boulevard. But at this point, they have no plans on making any changes in the space that they maintain in the right-of-way. They don't have any plans on changing any of the landscaping or re-landscaping any of the property. Again, it's, we've tried to keep the scope as limited as possible. And so I think it's, I think at this point, it's just premature. I mean, there is no adopted plan or approach to guide, you know, re-landscaping consistent with the plan that the residents are working on. But moving forward, the Wrights, obviously, if, if they do want to make landscape changes, will obviously submit those changes. And, and, you know, they, they, again, if there's an adopted plan in place for them to conform to, have no problem conforming to that plan. I just think at this point, it's premature. And this is really an administrative thing, just doc, you know, paperwork for argument's sake. And so we would, we would ask at this point that you support our request for the waiver. And, and they have no problem with the other conditions of Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Lowry, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I understand what you've heard, both from the applicant and from Mr. Yo. And I agree with both of them. I actually find it kind of strange that, in its wisdom and policy L6, that the city council delegated the decision about issues of this sort to the Planning Commission rather than our Park Speech and Recreation Commission, because in our city charter, PBNR is actually charged with advising the city council about matters having to do with the streets and the parkways. And this seems to be a parkway issue. I do have an issue with one of the findings in the resolution you're being asked to adopt, which is finding B4 on handwritten page 27 of the resolution I'm looking at. It goes into great detail explaining that if the Wrights wanted to build a garage, swimming pool, fences, sheds or landscaping in this area, they would not need a coastal development permit. This finding does not seem to be necessary, or that fact, so-called fact, does not seem to be necessary to support the finding, which is that the encroachment is consistent with the public interest. But moreover, it's just totally false, and it's a misreading of our local coastal program. At this location, there are exceptions to the code section at sites, and all of those things that it says would need a permit if they were going to be newly installed in that area, because it's within 50 feet of a bluff, because it's between the first public road and the sea, and because it's directly adjacent to a public view designated in our coastal plan, View Road. So for all those reasons, what it says here is wrong. And if this was new development in that area, it absolutely would need a coastal development permit. So I would suggest just striking that entire section B4, because it is incorrect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Our questions are looking like we'll go ahead and close the public comments. And is there any questions amongst the commissioners? Commissioner Rosine?
So Mr. Mosher's bringing up something that, whether or not the findings are factual in this particular instance, I'm just interested in hearing staff's comment or response to Mr. Mosher's comment.
Deputy Director Jim Camel will go ahead and answer that question.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Elmore. You know, this finding is really disgusting. We're making this finding indicating that we don't need a coastal development permit for the agreement that reflects the existing improvements. It's our understanding that the improvements have been out there prior to the Coastal Act, and the Coastal Act has a provision that authorizes existing improvements. And so what we're doing here is simply just doing an agreement to reflect those existing improvements to allow them to remain, subject to the agreement. I wouldn't want to read this to suggest that future improvements would be exempt. That would have to go through its own separate review. So, you know, we wouldn't want this to be reflective and controlling over any future improvements. And if the language isn't clear, I think maybe we can clean that up. But it was not intended to suggest that anything other than the existing improvements is exempt.
That's what I think I'm hearing, is that the language is being interpreted in that way. And I just wonder if there's a way to give staff the opportunity to clean that up, and as you see fit.
Commissioner Rosine, we could easily just, in the motion perhaps, add a sentence, you know, to the motion essentially saying that any future construction or improvements would require or would not be subject to the exemption.
Thank you.
No further questions? All right.
I just wanted to go on the CDMRA had brought up. So this is 110-foot wide by 52 feet. Is that the area that is technically city, city land? Is that what the, I'm just trying to get a handle on what is. I'm just pulled up an image here on Google Earth just to look at what it is that is kind of being discussed. I mean, the neighboring house has the same type of landscaping as does the, actually both, they're just slightly different. So over time, if the PBNR, they discuss what that area needs improvements on, and they say, okay, we want to change up that right-of-way to clean this whole entire area, then the city would have the right to come back and say, you know, owners of this property, I'm sorry, we're changing a course on what we've initially allowed and granted you. But the city now has an idea that they want to clean up this area and make it more, have a public access, as is areas of Inspiration Point and those types of, further to the left and right, maybe towards Little Corona as well. So doing this tonight really doesn't change anything. It allows staff and the commission, PBNR commission, to come back to the table and discuss. And if that's what the city council wants to do down the road, they can clean this area up. And then the owner granted this tonight would have to abide by what the city's saying. Did I have that correct?
Yes, generally, that's exactly correct.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'm okay with this item.
Any comments? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve this item with the cleanup comments that were indicated by Yolanda.
I'll second.
Sorry, I'm on that Google Earth. So can I vote by hand, or do you need me to get out of there? Gary, there we go. Okay, I got it. Thanks.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Okay, we'll move on to number seven in our agenda on our public hearing items, and we'll take item number three, which is Tattoo Establishment Zoning Ordinance Update, PA 2020-003. And I believe Matt is up for this one, if I'm correctly.
Good evening, Commissioners. Matt Schneider, Principal Planner, Department of Community Development. This is a continued item from the May 6 hearing. Before I get into the presentation, just to give some, a quick refresher of what we discussed in the last meeting, there's been a number of legal decisions related to the zoning of tattoo establishments that we discussed, and the courts view that tattooing is considered protected speech under the First Amendment, and how we use that as a basis in crafting the ordinance that's before you tonight, and with a focus on reasonable time, place, and manner regulations. At the conclusion of the last meeting, there were a number of topics that were discussed, and the commission voted to continue the item so that we could research those and report back to you. The first item relates to calls for service, and there was an interest in seeing if there's any correlation in the day and time of calls for service to police for the five existing tattoo establishments, to see if that could help inform the hours of operation for the proposed ordinance. And we coordinated with the police department, and they've reported back that there is no correlation or pattern. They occur at random days and times. And so there was nothing to be gleaned from that. They also reported back that there was no problem establishments among the five existing uses, or no specific drains on police resources. The next topic relates to smoking, and there was an interest in exploring if there could be some regulations related to smoking. And we did look into that, and we've added language into the draft ordinance before you tonight that would prohibit smoking within 20 feet of a new tattoo establishment. And that would relate to or be effective for both customers and employees. The next topic was related to annual review. We looked into this issue as well. Because we're proposing a ministerial permit process, it doesn't really lend itself to an annual review process. They're handled administratively, over-the-counter, if you will. But we do have the existing code enforcement tools available to us, and so establishments that don't comply with the ordinance would face progressive penalties. And ultimately, if there was non-compliance, they could be forced to close. There was also discussion in the last meeting regarding buffers or separation requirements between tattoo establishments and various uses, such as residence in parks. We did look at that and looked at a number of different scenarios. Ultimately, adjusting what is proposed would really limit the number of opportunity areas in the city where new tattoo establishments could be established. And so we're not recommending any modifications to the proposed separation or buffers. And then the last topic related to medical zoning. And so there was an interest in seeing if we could focus tattoo establishments into medically-zoned areas within the city. Overall, the city allows tat, or I'm sorry, medical in all of the commercial and office zones, with the exception of one or two zones. So that presents some challenges. There is one zone, Office Medical, which is predominantly medical, but it still allows other uses such as retail, restaurant, and professional office. So we didn't really see that as a viable solution. But the three zones that we are proposing, the Office General, Office Regional, and Commercial General Zones, are zones where it's currently allowed. But these also provide the greatest opportunities for establishing tattoos, shops. When you factor in the separation requirements, that'll go over here in a minute. So we reviewed the proposed amendment at the last meeting, but just as a refresher, again, there are location requirements and operational standards. There are several separation requirements. One would be 1,000-foot separation between tattoo establishments, 500-feet separation between schools, parks, and playgrounds, as well as 500-feet from residences. In terms of operating standards, we had proposed 10 to 10 at the last meeting. There was some discussion about hours of operation. We did go back and look at our existing use permits for the five establishments. And the most recently issued use permit does have a condition of approval, which limits it to appointment only. And so we've included language in the proposed ordinance that that would be a provision moving forward with the new establishments, between the hours of 10 to 10, but appointment only. Additional operation standards relate to security systems, screening from public view, alcohol and marijuana use prohibited. I previously mentioned the smoking prohibition within 20 feet that's been added. Standards for noise sign, parking, general compliance with all the city's standards, as well as state, county, and health regulations. So I have a series of maps that I'd like to walk through that kind of paints the picture of where, where these uses exist and where they would be allowed in the proposed ordinance. So what we're looking at with the first map is all the commercial and office zones where you can currently establish a tattoo establishment through the use permit process under the existing regulations. And then we've highlighted the five existing tattoo establishments with circles. And so under the proposed ordinance, again, the five existing would remain in the circles. But there would be two areas where, where when you apply the separation requirements, tattoo establishments would be allowed. One is in the Newport Center area, just south of Newport Center Drive along Anacapa. And the other would be on Irvine Boulevard between Bristol and Orchard. I can sort of walk through how we arrived at this by layering in different separation requirements. So again, these are the zones where it's currently allowed with a major use permit in the existing locations. And then if I add a layer in, these red areas that are clouded in highlight 500-foot separation from residential properties. So those would not be viable locations. Then we add in our schools and parks, and add a 500-foot separation from them. And you can see that with the black dotted line. And again, those areas would not be viable. So you're really left with the two areas that I mentioned that are highlighted with the gold diamonds. Looking at it a little closer, again, this is in the Newport Center area. You can see the park buffer indicated with the black line, which would mean the area in gold would be where new tattoo establishments would be viable. This is same image, but, or same perspective, but in an aerial. And again, the area highlighted in green is where tattoo establishments would be allowed, when factoring in the separation requirements. Shifting locations to the Irvine-Bristol location, the area in gold, again, is where tattoo establishments would be permitted. Aerial perspective, highlighted in green. And between the two sites, when you factor in the office suites and retail suites, we estimate there's about 150 to 200 locations that are possible. We did send notice to all the existing property owners and business owners of the five existing tattoo establishments, both at the original meeting and for tonight's meeting. I did receive one call from one of the existing tattoo establishment owners, but he didn't express any concerns after I kind of walked him through what's being proposed. The existing establishments would be, come legal non-conforming uses. If they wanted to expand or intensify, they would have to go through the conditional use permit process. And if they ceased or discontinued operations for more than 180 days, they would lose their use permit privileges. With that, we're recommending that the project is exempt from CEQA, and that the commission adopted two resolutions, one which is related to the zoning ordinance amendment itself, and the second, which would authorize staff to submit a local coastal program amendment related to the associated amendments to Title 21. I should mention that Wendy Jo from the Police Department is joining us this evening, and she helped coordinate on some of the information I provided tonight. And we're both happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. All right, for Commissioners, do we have any questions of staff?
Pardon, Vice, or Chair Lowry?
Yes.
I just want to, please let the record reflect, Commissioner Kettin has arrived.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions for staff before we move on to public comments for this item?
Just a quick question for staff on approval of future use or CUPs for this. So if the three, or the two identified areas, if somebody wanted to come, they would do it all administratively through staff? Or do they still need to come to PC for approval?
It would be administratively through staff. It's essentially over-the-counter process. They would have to demonstrate they meet all the criteria, and then they would be issued the associated building permit or business license.
And then if the existing non-conformings just fall out of favor, or they do, you know, something illegally, then that just, you know, opens them up for that discussion to be removed? Or how does that work for the existing?
The five existing operate under use permits, and so there is the ability to revoke the use permit if there becomes some kind of ongoing issue. And that would be the mechanism with those.
Would that be administratively, or would that come to PC to discuss?
I believe revocation requires a hearing with the commission.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sorry, just to be clear, if it's administrative, but they, and they would not need a CUP? Or did I miss hear something?
Under the proposed ordinance, new establishments, so excluding the five existing, a new one coming forward, would not need a CUP.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
All right. Seeing no other questions from the, from our Commissioners, we'll open up for public comments. Mr. Mosher?
Thank you, Chair Lowry. My name again is Jim Mosher. Regarding the future allowed locations, we saw two, one in Newport Center. As the Planning Commission is well aware, there is seeking council approval currently, a residential project, condo project on Anacapa, which would be immediately adjacent to that. So assuming that project is approved, one would wonder how much of that area in Newport Center would still be allowed for the tattoo uses, or is it totally extinguished? And then the area by the airport near Bristol could be mistaken. Is, in the aerial photo, did it not show an existing non-conforming residential use possibly still existing? And I think it's Orchard Drive at the southern end of that. And if so, how much would that wipe out of that area? But assuming the Newport Center one is gone, it would appear that there would only be allowed one additional establishment in all of Newport Beach. And I don't know, some people might find that rather restrictive. And then on the theme of keeping facts factual, I'm looking at handwritten page nine, which is the first page of the proposed resolution. Section one, paragraph two describes two Ninth Circuit Federal Court decisions that impact supposedly what staff is able to do. I briefly read both of those just before coming here. The first one is kind of correctly described, Anderson versus City of Hermosa Beach. The court struck down a ban on tattoo parlors justified on the basis of the risk of infection. They actually struck down a total ban on tattoo parlors, which we almost have here, justified on the basis of infection, because it could be done in a less aggressive way. But the second one is not described correctly at all. The second one, it says, "The court held that the Long Beach conditional use permit requirement for tattoo establishments vested unbridled discretion in a government official." And that's what you've been told here, you could not have conditional use permits. It has to be done administratively because of this court case. But the court case actually, at least this particular one, before the appeals court, didn't make that finding at all. All they determined was that the Mr. Real, the plaintiff, who had been denied standing by the trial court, they found that he did have standing and could make his claim that their conditional use permit was unconstitutional, but they did not make that finding themselves. They just sent it back to the trial court to see if Hermosa Beach's conditional use permit requirement was unconstitutional. So I would think we need to do some follow-up to find out whether it actually was found unconstitutional or not, because the appeals court did not find that. And then finally, I'm very confused about the finding about whether these are problems with the Police Department. You have a finding on page 11, based on a background report from your last meeting. Then you have a new letter tonight that seem, two seem to contradict each other. One is saying these are huge problem areas, and the new letter says that they're not a problem at all. So I don't know how you reconcile those. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider, is there anything you'd like to follow up on with that, and any other comments before we close the public hearing?
Yeah, sure. I can clarify, and if it's all right, I'll pull up the map just to talk about the viable areas in response to Mr. Mosher. So looking at the Newport Center site, the property that he spoke about is the existing car wash on the corner of Anacapa. If you were to create a 500-foot separation, if that were to become residential... If you were to create a 500-foot separation, if that were to become residential, it basically would hit sort of a quarter way between the Edwards Cinema, and so that portion that's highlighted in green, moving towards the right side of the screen, would continue to be viable if that were to be rezoned, the car wash property. In terms of the Newport, I'm sorry, the Irvine Boulevard site, I know there, I believe he's referring to, there is a mixed-use property, but I don't believe it's a legal non-conforming property, where there may be perhaps what was previously a residential property in there, but I believe it's office now, but that's something we can confirm. But regardless, this site is approximately 1,250 feet long, so conceivably, two tattoo establishments could be established and maintain the 1,000-foot separation. And then finally, with regard to the police information, we did, at the initial hearing, included background research. We had calls for services. I think it's important to point out that we were making a distinction for calls for services between tattoo establishments and other personal service uses, which tattoos currently fall under, and those would be day spas, tanning salons, et cetera. And we did note that there was a higher call for service, and the findings weren't based exclusively on that. It was also referred to a number of academic peer-reviewed articles that talked about secondary effects. I think I addressed the main areas that you brought up. Thank you.
But in terms of calls, it was just within that subset, there was more calls for the...
Correct.
Okay, I get it. Okay. All right.
I was just, if I may. I was just going to add that with respect to the Real versus City of Long Beach decision, what I can say, I don't have the exact language in the case, but what I can say is that the court held that the case, I'm sorry, the ordinance was facially invalid, and so as a result of CUP requirements, it was very terse between the trial court and the Court of Appeals, but that's essentially what we have at this point, is that we know that a discretionary approval would be considered violation of the First Amendment, and that's the whole reason why we're here. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public comments and move on to the commissioners, if they have any additional questions of staff or comments amongst ourselves here. Anybody would like to lead off? Commissioner Wagon?
I think I'm good to make a motion. I'm a supporter of the industry. I think this kind of does two things. It codifies this with the city and creates an ordinance that prevents us from having to see these establishments come and us deciding, you know, if we support tattoos or not, and we've had those discussions here in the past. So far, we've had two, one get approved and one actually withdrew. So they were frustrated with the process, and I think that kind of showed why we needed to have this ordinance. So I'm supportive of it. I think that it does give some opportunities left in the city. Yes, there may be a residential to come, but maybe if there's a tattoo operator out there that's interested in getting through the process, you have 14 days from today if this gets approved, to run things through quickly before there's a potential, and I guess you would be non-conforming at that point, right? But you'd at least get approved. And I guess that would be a question I would ask staff. If there were somebody that got approved in that center and then a residential did come up, would they be just non-conforming, or would they have to walk away?
If a tattoo establishment came into place before residential zoning change, they would have a right to continue that operation.
Perfect. Okay. So anyway, I'm supportive of this. I'll make a motion to approve it. So that would be Resolution Number PC 2021-019, and again, I'm supportive.
Any other comments or a secondary?
Matt, thank you for the drawings that you did on that to show the radiuses. That was very helpful, and I really appreciated that. And I'll go ahead and second the motion.
And just, I don't mean to be ticky tack, there are two resolutions. One was the PC 2021-18, and then as well as the 19.
My apologies. Yeah, I'll do 18 and 19. And I do want to thank staff for their hard work on this. I know that we had a discussion once before and got a little bit, but the answers, I think, were sufficient, and I think that it was a lot of hard work that you put into coming up with this, so thank you.
Yeah, I'll add to that, because I was one of the persons that had questions, so I appreciate staff's time and coming back and reviewing a lot of the questions that we had, and I think you answered all of mine.
The motion carries for one with Commissioner Kettin abstaining.
Chair, before we move on to the next item, I'm going to recuse myself from this item. I have some real property interest in some of the properties that are adjacent to these subject properties.
So item number four. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Elmore?
And just for the record, if I may, Commissioner Kleiman is, or I should say Vice Chair Kleiman is not present, however, she did have a real property interest and was intending to recuse herself as well.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to item number four, which is setback map correction zoning code and LCP amendment PA 2020-006. And we'll go ahead and go on with staff's presentation.
Yes, good evening, Chair Lowry, members of the commission. My name is Jaime Moriel, Principal Planner, and this item before you is an amendment to both the city zoning code and the local coastal program implementation plan. And it's related to correcting a number of errors that we've discovered that are in the setback maps that were created from the 2010 comprehensive zoning code update. And so, just to provide a little bit of background on the purpose of the setback maps, they go back to 1943. At that time, they were called districting maps. And the purpose of these districting maps is to identify a front yard setback that differs from the standard 20-foot setback that applies to most properties, residential properties citywide. Sometimes the setback could be less than 20 feet, sometimes it could be more, but generally it's less than 20 feet. The other purpose of these districting maps was to establish multiple yards that should be treated as a front yard, and the purpose of doing that is to regulate accessory structures. So like fences, walls, hedges, within a front yard would be regulated to a maximum height of 42 inches, but within a side or rear yard, they'd be regulated to six feet. So it does impact accessory structures. These districting maps were hand-drawn and updated throughout the years, but in 2010, as I mentioned, the city went through a comprehensive zoning code update, and these maps were modernized. When the city received its certified local coastal program in 2017, those same setback maps were incorporated into the LCP for the properties within the coastal zone. But since implementing the setback maps since 2010, we have discovered a number of maps have errors, which create a number of non-conformities for properties. And so there's really no intent to change these property owners' existing development rights, but in some cases, we established through these errors, it ends up resulting in larger setbacks than intended. This limits people's, or property owners' property rights, how large of a home they can build, location of accessory structures, so it has a lot of impacts. It also results in a number of inconsistencies with the established development patterns in these neighborhoods. So the sole purpose of this is really just to correct the maps. We are updating a total of 11 maps. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I just want to provide examples on two maps. So this is District E Map DM 18, and the property I want to highlight is at 3,000, 3,002 Breakers. So you can see on the District E Map, there's little handwritten fives on the two frontages, and so that indicates that the front yards would only be five feet. This is the current setback map in both the zoning code and local coastal program. There's those same properties. As you can see, there's no front setback indicated. So although the intent was to have a five-foot front yard setback, because there's no indicator on these maps, it reverts back to the default 20-foot setback, and you can see how that greatly impacts those properties. So as part of this proposed amendment, on the upper right-hand portion of the slide, you can see what we're proposing is to add those two five-foot indicators on the setback map, and the picture on the bottom left shows the existing development and how they conform to the five-foot setbacks. Just one other change I want to highlight, this is District E Map DM 23, and the properties I want to highlight are located on Harbor Island. And you can see on this District E Map, these two properties circled have an 11 and 1/2-foot setback to the side property line. This is adjacent to a pedestrian walkway. But on the current setback maps that are in both codes, we added a 19-foot setback. So as part of this amendment, on that bottom left, you can see we're going to change the indicator from 19 feet to 11 and 1/2 feet, consistent with the original District E Map. Since we released the staff report, staff did discover that an additional change to setback map S2E needed to be made, and so we distributed a memo to the commission. And that's related to the properties at 601 and 605 West Bay Avenue, though there's two properties shaded in yellow. Those properties have been reconfigured, and they face West Bay Avenue, and they were constructed with a nine-foot setback, consistent with the nine-foot setback of the properties to the west. And so we would request that this additional change to the map be incorporated into the draft resolutions. And lastly, we did receive public comments from Mr. Jim Mosher, who did highlight an additional property that does need to be fixed as well. This wasn't originally identified in your packet, but it is one of the maps we are proposing to fix, with this property at 2,011 Kings. You can see on the upper left-hand side, the original District E Map 21 only indicated a 10-foot setback along Kings Road. However, the current setback map shows a 10-foot setback on both Kings and Cliff Drive, which is an error. And so we would request that the setback maps, the corrections include the proposal shown on the upper right-hand corner, which is again, just a 10-foot setback along Kings Road. And I did confirm that the property was reconstructed in 2004, and it was constructed with a four-foot setback, as shown on that bottom right-hand corner. So that concludes my report. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the two resolutions, recommending that the city council adopt code amendment 2019-001 and local coastal program amendment 2019-001, with the two revisions to maps S2E and S6 that I just went over. And then just want to point out that the local coastal program amendments or the changes to Title 21 will require California Coastal Commission approval. And so that concludes my report, and available for any questions. I do have all the affected maps, if there's any specific question on any one of them.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions for staff from the commissioners before we open up to public comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to public comments, if there's any. Seeing that we don't have any public comments, we'll go ahead and come back here to the commission, and we'll close the public comments here, and we'll just, have any other questions with staff or discussion amongst ourselves?
Just like to thank staff. This is a massive amount of work, pluck out all these little fine details and all the lots everywhere that, I'm sure there are some that are going to be picked up again, but it's a job well done. I applaud you for all that and for...
Thank you.
...the future of the owners of the lots. It's a clear indication of what the setback requirements are. Just a comment.
I agree with my comment. This is a very proactive approach with a lot of, sometimes other cities, you don't see such a proactive approach to this, and able to, property owners now can really get a better idea of their highest and best use of their property, so I agree with my colleague here. Mr. Rizzi?
Yeah, I agree. There's a lot going on here, and thank you, Jaime. This is, you know, pretty amazing. But at the end of the day, I'm wondering about people that, how was notice for this handled? And maybe I missed it, I apologize, but if someone has impacted positively or negatively, was there a notice to each individual that was...
Yes, that's a good question, and we did consider that. So I sent out a courtesy notice to each affected property owner. The two additional changes that I just went over, I did send an additional notice to the property owners on Sixth Street. The two property, well, the one property owner on Kings, I have not provided a notice, but I'll be sending them a courtesy notice as well before we go to city council.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, or anyone would like to make a motion?
Chair, I'll make a motion for this.
All right.
Let's see, what do we do? Zoning code and LCP amendments related to setback corrections, PA 2020-006, including, I'm going to, additional ones in attachments, S8, S-2E, and S6 that staff reported. Am I missing anything? Is that a vote?
No, you got it.
All right.
I will second that. All right. Thank you, and we'll call Commissioner Elmore back in. There he is. All right, we'll move on to section eight of the agenda, staff and commissioner items. We'll go to item number five, motion for reconsideration.
Chair Lowry, if I may. Simone Giroud, Community Development Director. This is for Commissioner Kettin. Mr. Kettin, you know, on the, I just want to give you an opportunity, on the tattoo establishment, you did vote, you abstained from that vote, and you know, you and I had a few words while you walked in. I wanted to give you the opportunity, you were here at the first meeting, this was a second continued meeting. If you want to change your vote in any manner, you definitely have that opportunity.
All right, I'll change it to affirmative.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number six, the report by Community Development Director, or request for matters, or request matters which a Planning Commissioner member would like to proceed on a future agenda.
Thank you, Chair Lowry. I'm going to keep this brief tonight, if that's okay. We have our next agenda. You should have your tentative schedule there for, we have, what's listed here is five items on the agenda. It's really actually going to be four. I'll just go in order here real quick. We've got a minor encroachment on carnation, we have the residents at Newport Center, which you've seen at a study session previously, and then Pacific Christian School, a general plan amendment, the wireless telecommunications facility, I think that's going to take a little bit more time, we'll bring that back in September most likely. Then we have a tentative there for the Bristol Street Medical Offices. This was an item that you saw previously, but continued off calendar and would come back. And so that's what we have for the upcoming agenda. And the only other item I would, might mention is that the Planning Commission at your last meeting did evaluate the director's determination, the appeal of the director's determination related to residential structures, accessory residential uses at hotels. That was appealed, and we'll go to the city council, and we're tentatively scheduling that for August 24th.
Chair, Jim, who appealed that?
Spawn did.
Okay. Never know.
And...
Could have been trout.
Never mind.
And that concludes my report.
Last question from me, sorry. Residents at Newport Center Drive, is that in a good condition to bring it on to us?
The project is ready to go.
Yes. All right. All right, good.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Nope.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item number seven, requests for excused absences. Anyone have any vacation planned, or? Looks like none. Well, we hear, all right, then we will adjourn at, what are we, at 7:20 it looks like?
Yeah. So, yeah. So...